The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Okay, next on the agenda, let me get my microphone on. Next on the agenda is a fire evacuation. Should there be a fire, the fire alarm goes off, you can exit out the side doors, my left, your right, or out the back, and just get a clear distance away from the building. Approval of minutes, and we don't have them.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Okay, Terrence Lynch.
Here.
Lynda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronello is absent. Francis Alima.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Alinsky is here. Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
Patrick Cooper.
Here.
Walter Cruzel.
Here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move on to minutes, which we're not, we don't have any.
Do you want to appoint somebody for John?
We did, I'm going to appoint Commissioner Alinsky tonight.
To the alternate.
No.
I know, I thought you meant for secretary.
No, for alternate, alternate to cover for John.
Okay. Who was alternate on this, who was that?
April is Christian.
Oh, we're in April, okay. It's technically still our March meeting, so just moved, so.
Well, I don't know, do we go by April 3rd, or do we go?
Go by the date.
Okay.
Go by the date.
I guess if you want to be consistent with an application, we could.
I mean, it's all right, I don't really have.
It doesn't matter to me. I was on the last, I was part of the meeting last month.
And you participated and asked questions, so why don't we leave?
For tonight.
Yeah, for tonight's purposes.
Since it's a special meeting, okay.
We'll leave Walter as the chair.
No, you're the chair.
I'm the chair. Thank you.
We've got a reminder.
I know, well, you know.
He's been away.
He's been away. He has to be started.
It's easier remoted, right? Okay, so Commissioner Cruzel is going to sit as the alternate.
Okay.
Okay. And approval of the minutes, we don't have the minutes tonight, this is a special meeting. Town attorney's report, town attorney's report, zoning enforcement?
No.
No zoning enforcement. Public participation, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak tonight to planning and zoning, or staff, relative to any issues that aren't on the agenda? That aren't on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any bond releases?
Nope.
No bond releases. Do you have any administrative approvals?
Nope.
Nope. Well, we're moving right along here. Director of Planning Report.
If I have anything, I'll report it at the next meeting next week, our regular meeting.
Okay. Do we have any outside correspondence? Commissioners' correspondence? Commissioners, anything? Continued public hearings? We have PA 3088ZA. Are the applicants here?
Yes, that would be us.
That would be us.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, good evening. For the record, Carl Landalina, representing the applicant, Felician Sisters of North America Realty Trust. Joined to my right once again by Bridget Armstrong from Felician Services. And Ms. Julie James is also in the audience. She also works for Felician Services, she's a local person. Bridget is here from Chicago. So.
Attorney Landa, before you start, may I, and I think I should have probably said this on the record the last meeting, I feel I should. When this applicant was before us the first time, in my comments, I suggested or recommended that they maybe look at something like you're presenting now, something in the area of elderly. And I just want to put that on the record, that I said that for full disclosure.
That's fine, I really don't recall.
But I did, so I remember me and my comments.
Must have sunk in subconsciously, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I didn't.
But here we are.
Sorry to interrupt, but.
No, that's quite all right. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Landa.
Yeah. So, I think what you have before you should be the latest version, which was amended for, I guess, the fourth or fifth time. This is the version that we're hopefully, well, we're going to hopefully close the public hearing tonight with. This has been at the town clerk's office for the requisite 10 days. I submitted this to staff probably 14 or 15 days ago. It's very much like the prior version that you saw three weeks ago. And by the way, just as an aside, we appreciate that you having this special meeting for us this evening. We do appreciate that. I know it's only one week to your next meeting, but at this stage of the game, you know, a week here and a week there, given our financing package, so we appreciate you moving us up. Hopefully, we'll get an approval, maybe even tonight, so we can start our special permit application and come before you with the details and specifics of the actual project itself. So, I'll take you through the regulation again and tell you what's changed and what hasn't changed. So, just starting off, right now, housing for the elderly is not permitted in the HR-33 zone, under your table of uses, in section 4.20. It's the only residential zone in town in which this is not a permitted use. So, we're asking to allow this use in this zone by special permit. Also, there is a, I think in the next section in the table, there's another use, has to do with conversion of residential buildings, I think from single-family to up to four-family. There's a footnote there, footnote 13, which says that you must get approval by WPCA eventually, and so we're going to add that footnote 13 to apply here, and it would, would in any event. Then, we've changed, or we've stayed with the minimum lot area of 10 acres. We had discussions last time with you about that, why we picked that number, and I think I explained to you why we did. We could have gone with 25, and then we would have been the only owner of property in the zone that would have been eligible, and we thought that, we had, I had a problem with that legally. And then I know that Commissioner DeGray asked me about how many properties at the 10-acre level would be eligible, and I think I disclosed to you guys that there might be five or six. I went back and looked, actually, one of the neighbors, Anne Marie, who's in the audience tonight, went over, we went on GIS together, you know, at her house, she was at her house, I was at my office, and we went through the properties. There's nothing on the west side of Enfield Street or Route 5 that's eligible, because the HR-33 zone is a strip of land that goes back only a couple hundred feet, if that. So, there are small parcels that are entirely within the HR-33 zone on the west side, but there are some larger parcels, two of which are owned by the town where the high school is and the Enfield Street School is, where only the two, first 200 feet of your frontage of town properties are actually in the HR-33, the rest are in the R-33. So, I guess if the town wanted to do one of these projects, elderly housing, in, on the Enfield School, High School site, or the Enfield School site, it could already do so at the current density levels of 16. So, I don't see anybody changing the zone to get 11 less units per acre. So, they're all, those properties are already eligible for, for use under the R-33 provisions. So, we kept it at 10, and that leaves just us, the Little Sisters, the Purple Heart Museum, the cemetery, and then would be the Housing Authority property, which already has, you know, elderly housing on it. So, those would be the only properties that would be eligible under the current regulation that we're proposing. After discussions with the neighbors, we went from five, six to five dwelling units per density. Again, 16 is what's allowed in the other zones. The lot coverage hasn't changed, the setbacks haven't changed, we're still 60 and 50 feet respectively, and that's what applies to in the other zones. We had an issue with height, so we tried to work it out, we discussed it with you, then we discussed it with the neighbors, and so what we finally decided on is for any new construction, which we're going to have new construction as an addition to an existing building, it would stay at the 35-foot level. The exception being elevator shafts and other mechanical equipment, which would sit on top of the roof. Now, I wrote a message to staff about three weeks ago, including the building official. Typically, I don't think height ever includes the mechanicals that sit on top of the roof, as a matter of whatever. We weren't sure about the elevator shaft, because it's not sitting on the roof, it's protruding through the roof, and I couldn't get an answer from staff whether that would be included in height, all right, or not. So, I said to be on the safe side, let's just say that our height would be the height of the roof, not the elevator shaft that might be protruding through it. Now, there's going to be two elevator shafts here, and I don't know, yeah, one will meet the 35-foot, that's for the new addition. The addition, although, is going to be located so that the third floor, you can see right here, yep, go to the next one, right there. So, you can see that rectangle to, well, my right, your, whatever, yeah. So, here's the existing building, which, the height of the building is not here, the height is actually somewhere in this area, given how you measure height, but this will be the elevator shaft that we need in order to service the units on the third floor. If we didn't have units on the third floor, this shaft would be lower, but in order to get the 45 units that we have funding for, we have to put some units up on this third floor. Otherwise, it would have caused an expansion of this, you know, and it, you know, so this made the most sense. So, that shaft, the top of that shaft is actually 42 feet in height, as measured under your regulations, all right, and it's going to protrude through the roof of this, this is the addition. So, we thought, okay, exclusive this, and whatever might be on the roof here for mechanicals, we can meet the 35-foot height requirement. And the elevator shaft over here is, you can see right there, but that 35-foot height limitation is that line there, so the top of our elevator shaft on the addition will be no more than 35 foot in height, but we need this extra seven feet, right? Now, someone, I didn't even think about this, because I'm not an elevator guy, but one of the gentlemen, who's one of the neighbors, said, "Well, why don't you do a hydraulic elevator? Because then you don't need the workings on the top." And I was informed by our, our engineers and project people that those types of elevators are not, don't meet energy code requirements for energy savings that the federal government recognizes. I don't know. So, this is, we got to go old school with this, and that's why we need the equipment on the top, and we need that extra seven feet. So, what we're saying is exactly that, that we can, you know, we're not going to count that as height, but we're going to meet the height everywhere else. Parking, again, one space per studio or one-bedroom unit, and we are going to have 45 units, 41 one-bedroom units, and four studio units. So, we're not having any two-bedroom units, that's, that's the project here, that's what was approved, all right? We don't meet the requirements in this particular project to have any two bedrooms, so we're not going to use them. Now, this is also new, all right, and this came out of discussions with the neighbors, and it's actually something I did in the town of Windsor Locks, where I think I talked about this. This case actually went to the Connecticut Supreme Court, and we had designed a use in the business zone in Windsor Locks, and it's, as if you know, Route 75 and around there, it's a fairly large business zone for a small town. We limited the number of parcels that our regulation would apply to, to three, and they had to meet certain conditions to be one of those three, have frontage on Route 75, and be a certain size and all of that. And so, there were parcels on the, in the business zone that didn't meet that requirement, and one of the owners challenged that and said, "You're not meeting the uniformity principle." I think we touched on this basically last time a little bit. And one of the things we also said was that you can't merge two parcels together, in other words, if you had in Windsor Locks, or here on Enfield Street, this, in the HR-33, if you have nine acres, which there are a couple of parcels that are just right at the nine-acre limit, you can't go buy an acre and a half next year, merge them together to get 10, and then apply for elderly for the housing under this regulation, because what we're proposing to do is to max the number of eligible parcels as of October 1st of this year. So, I guess technically, someone who has nine could acquire one more and be ready to do that before now, and October 1st. The reason we picked that date, that's the grand list year, we picked it in Windsor Locks, and the court said, "Perfect, that's when you should have done it, on October 1st." So, rather than putting in here that you can't merge any parcels to get to the 10, after the approval, we used the October 1st date, because that's a date that the Supreme Court had already, it's been tested before them, and they seem to like that date. So, the two changes of what you've seen last time and this time is the height, we're willing to go to the 35, we just need that room for the elevator shaft, and that, the answer, I guess, essentially, I think Commissioner DeGray's concern, I think it was a concern of hers, you know, if there's four parcels now, could there be eight or 10 somewhere in the future? And the answer is, no. You got to meet those requirements in the next six months, or you're not eligible. So, you, and the court said, "Look, there are certain uses in certain zones, you want a few of them, you don't want a lot of them." All right? So, there's, I don't know, 100 properties in the HR-33, you know, you don't want 100 of these projects there, all right? And under the current, what we're proposing, you could have, I guess, you know, if the cemetery, I don't know, changed use, or if the Purple Heart Museum stopped being the Purple Heart Museum, I guess those things would be eligible. The Housing Authority would, you know, it is what it is over there, and I don't see the Little Sisters of the Poor, but they are technically eligible under this regulation. So, that's really kind of it. Those are the changes we've made. We did, again, I think twice since our last meeting, engage with, with the neighbors and through their, the two folks that are here, Anne Marie and Nikki, and I think, they'll tell you for themselves what they think, but I think they're on board with this as well. They may have concerns about something else that has nothing to do with our project, because our project is what you see in front of you, and what hopefully you'll have in front of you in the next 60 days or so to kind of get into the details. So, be happy to answer any questions that you have, concerns?
Questions? Vinnie?
Thank you. Just, just so you know, this is not Danborn. The height, when you have the roof, on a flat roof, it is the gutter line. On a peaked roof, it is the peak. So, where your angle comes up, and then that comes up above, if that angle continues, okay, you draw an imaginary line, to the peak of that is the height, that's how they go.
Now, your regulations define it as the mean distance, the mean height between this point on a gable end and that point, and you find that, and you draw a line across that. That's how your regulations currently define height. I don't know, the building code might do it differently.
Yeah.
That's why, yeah, but on a flat roof, you are correct that, and if there was a parapet up here, which there probably will be like a one-footer, because the actual surface of the roof will probably be down here, it's the, that would be the height of the building.
Basically, where that dotted line is.
Yeah, that's 35 feet.
That's, should be, okay, so maybe that doesn't, but in the building requirement, if you were to pull a permit for, to build a garage, a house, that line that you see, that dotted line?
Yeah.
That's what they go by.
Yeah.
The point, just for the record.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, and maybe that's.
It's not an issue, I'm just trying to tell you, do you have an idea how much higher that is, or above that dotted line?
What, this right here?
Yes.
Seven feet.
It is seven feet.
Yeah, this, from here to, again, so, I mean, I'm not trying to do a physics lesson or geometry, because I would fail at that, but the height of this building actually changes now, because the average elevation around the entire site now goes down. So, this is now where you start measuring height, as before, it was at a different location. So, 35 feet, I think, or this point from here to there is right there at that line, right? Yeah. But this is 42 feet, and if, you know, from the ground, it might be 43 or 44 or 45, but the way you guys measure height under your regulations, it's 42 feet.
Okay.
So, it's seven feet above, yeah.
The, um.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Lloyd.
I don't mean to interrupt, but.
No, that's okay. Okay. My other thing, after looking at everything, and I don't want anybody to take me the wrong way, first of all, housing for the elderly in 60 above, I am so grateful for that. I like that, okay? That's my opinion. And for that reason, if you go back and you go into J, in the third, number three on J, I would really like the commission to look at that and.
I don't have J in front of me, is that the disability thing?
I'll read that for you. The commissioner may require that the owner slash management annual report to the commission through the zoning enforcement officer on compliance with these standards. The standards are basically occupants should be at least 62 years old, and in a case of multiple occupancy of dwelling units, at least one resident shall be at least 62 years old, and all other residents at least 50 years old.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, I would like to see J 3.
It's already included.
And.
In other words, we didn't change.
Well, it says it may require, so I took, I read that, that we would have to require that, and that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, it says may, that doesn't mean that we have to, but a lot of this, I believe, comes from statutes.
Right.
The definition of elderly versus senior and things.
And I understand we don't have to, because it says may, but.
We can change this at some time, but not for this application.
Okay.
Because it's not part of this application.
I'm sorry, where are you reading the word "may"?
So, he's looking at 4.40.1J.
Yeah, age restrictions, yeah. Occupants shall be at least 62 years old, and if, and if multiple occupancy, at least one resident shall be at least 62, and all other residents at least 50.
And then, under that, the commission may require, that's what I'm reading, right from the paper.
Oh, 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 yeah, may require an annually report?
Yes.
Oh, to ensure compliance.
Yes.
So, are you saying we should take that out?
No, I, no, I'm not saying taking that out.
Let me address this. I think as a condition of the next phase?
Yep.
You could say, you have to report every year. I know it says we may require, we're going to require with you, and make that a condition of the special permit.
Well, I'm not saying you have, I'm not.
Yeah.
I, I'm asking about it, and if we were to do that, so I misunderstood that part, if it was on this one or the other one.
Yeah.
But I'd like somewhere to say that this is definitely, and to need to know, that it is going to be for elderly and not, or, I mean, or, handicapped, I don't know how else to word it, you know, I have nothing against either or.
I got to ask a quick question, hold on a second, because I read this somewhere. All right, I thought I was correct about this. I'm not saying generally here, but our program, the 202 program?
Yep.
You must be 62 years of age to occupy one of these units, and even if you are disabled and younger, you are not eligible to live here.
I just needed to hear that from you, sir.
That's the 202 program.
This is what I wanted to hear, that's all.
Yeah, which is a little bit unusual, because I know that in many other federal programs, you can't discriminate, well, I don't want to use that word, but you, right, but this particular program, every occupant has to be 62.
That's what I was, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Sure.
I'll send it. Any other questions? Commissioner, any other questions?
Through the chair to staff, if I remember correctly, reading my regs, as I do, under 4.40.1H height requirement, I believe there's a footnote somewhere, and I can't remember, about the elevator, which would be addressed during the site, the, the next phase of this, protruding above the line.
You'll have to go to the regulations.
I think.
What, what section is that?
It's 4.40.1H. I believe it was H. I saw that there was a footnote, there was a bunch of footnotes, you have to read everything.
I didn't, I didn't.
And there is something about the elevator height, and that would be addressed in your next.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we're subject to 4.40.1, but.
So, you know. I don't remember where.
Ironically, if you were just putting in the elevator shaft for the existing building, you would be eligible for the, the increase.
Right.
Under H.
Under H.
Yeah. We're providing that.
But you're not following that H.
We're, we're saying, no, you can't, you can't give us a height, that's why I stuck it in there. And again, that was during discussions with the neighbors. They didn't want you to have the authority to do that, I respect what they're, they're saying, yeah.
It was just something I read.
Yep, thank you.
Any more questions? Commissioner Alinsky?
Yes, I just want to state for the record that I feel fully capable of participating tonight, since I was absent on March 14th, but I did watch the video online, so for the record, I think I'm fully up to speed on this. The question I have, I don't think I heard traffic mentioned at all. Do we anticipate any increase in traffic with the new building?
We're going to give you all of that when we come in for our, our special permit, but we have traffic folks who will present to you at that time.
Sure, okay.
I can't imagine.
I can't imagine it would be a problem.
Yeah, and I think, we, we mentioned just briefly last time, that we're not adding any, we're going to combine entrances from South Road.
Sure.
So, that, we're going to, we're going to reroute traffic internally.
Sure.
You know, to separate some of these uses, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And Will, Commissioner D'Antonio?
Yeah, so, so if I'm getting this correct, the maximum building height you proposed would be unnecessary if you accounted for section H, which was the, the commission may increase the building height by more, by not more than 40%.
Correct.
So, you're, to clarify, you're capping yourself, because you would be able to go beyond that.
Higher.
You would be able to go higher.
Correct.
So, and, and, and that's kind of how you wrote all of this, which was, you are, you were capping yourself even, even more than the regulations exist today.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And we thought that was appropriate, because, I didn't do the research, but there's a reason why this use isn't, isn't currently permitted in the HR-33. I don't know what the reason is, because I didn't research, but there had to be a good reason that you did it, whenever it was done. So, we're asking for something that you originally said, maybe not a good idea here. So, we're thinking that the balancing and the trade-off would be that we wouldn't just say, okay, put the HR-33, put an SP there, and we're done, and we'll follow the 16 units, the two and a half acres, all the rest of it, that we, we, we thought there should be a trade-off, capping the number of, you know, the acreage, the height, all the rest of that, so that's, yeah, and we're willing, obviously, we're willing to do that, and after discussions with the neighbors, they like those limitations, because they don't want to see these, again, proliferate in the HR-33, because it's a special zone, has a special feeling, and, you know, if it weren't for the fact that we've got two relatively old buildings on the site, I don't think, you know, if we were just planning on building new stuff here, we wouldn't probably even be in front of you. I don't think we would have gotten this far, in this particular zone. So, it allows us to do this adaptive reuse of what's there, and make it a plan that everyone, I think, can live with. But you're right, we're, we're giving all that up, yeah.
And kind of on the same note, you did add parking minimum that does not exist today for the, the housing for elderly, or it goes beyond that, rather. So, our current regulation is .7 spaces, .75 spaces per unit. So, I'm particularly wary about requiring more parking. So I'm, I'm particularly wary about requiring more parking than needed. In fact, there's, there's lots of case studies across the country where the, the goal is to decrease parking minimums, if not eliminate them entirely. So this is kind of a, a red flag for me. So I'm wondering what your motivation is? What makes the HR 33 zone different for elderly housing that it would require, that it should have a, a, a different minimum parking requirement than the standard we already have in our requirements?
Well, first of all, what you have in your, in your regulations is a minimum. It's not a maximum. So, and if you, you know, the provisions of the latest omnibus zoning statute, 21-29, Public Act 29, 29, says you can't have a, require any more than one space per bedroom, essentially, I'm paraphrasing. But the developer has done a number of these types of projects, and based upon that experience, we don't think that your minimum is enough.
It was cut and paste.
So if, even if we came in and said, I, we recognize that you have a minimum of .7 or .75, we would still be proposing at least one.
Excuse me.
Yep.
We got a little sidebar over there.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all. I'm sorry, Mr. Alina.
Yeah. So I guess the answer to your question, Commissioner, would be this is based upon historical experience with these types of projects, and these spaces are also going to be for visitors, and we're hoping that, you know, people are going to visit their grandparents or parents that are, that are occupying these spaces. So, and the other thing is, if you look at housing for the elderly, generally, it's 16 units an acre. Those are sort of like standalone. If you look at most of them that have been approved, they are sort of standalone projects. There aren't so a lot like multi, this kind of density in a small area. But in any event, historically, we've just decided that it's more appropriate to go in at least one. And I think what you might see from us is something a little bit higher than one to account for visitors and all the rest of it. But I understand what you're saying, that, you know, especially in the retail market, there's way too many parking spaces everywhere around this country, you know, that are, that are used. I'm not sure if the same would hold for the residential development.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess my, my concern, and I'm just putting this out there, my concern is having very specific, you know, very granular requirements for, for different pieces here and there, and kind of overriding our standard regulations and, and just creating discrepancies. So I, I guess, through the chair to staff, I mean, my concern is getting overly prescriptive with our, our regulations. And I'm, I'm, again, through the chair to staff, I'm wondering, Lori, if, if you have any kind of concerns about us creating too much complexity in our regulations and what your professional opinion is on that?
So, I mean...
Do you want to wait for staff's comments, or you want to answer now? It's up to you, Lori.
I, I could answer now or later. You know, obviously, current parking regulations are not up to par with reality. I think that we definitely need to reconsider our parking requirements, but I wouldn't want to do it willy-nilly. Do I think that one space per, what, per one-bedroom unit, it, it might be a little bit more than we need, but there's always a concern about the parking and for guests and whatnot. I've unfortunately dealt with a lot of elderly housing, and I've actually been to places where there was not enough parking. They have events and things of that nature, you know, for, you know, holidays or something, and all the families come, and that, that does create an issue. But overall, I think that, yes, we should be reducing our parking standards, but I don't know if now is the time.
This, this makes sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Lori.
Yeah, it totally makes sense.
Anyone else? Commissioner Luzo.
So looking at the sheet we got for April 30th meeting, on the third page, it's highlighted 40.4, 4.40.1, housing for the elderly. But in our regs, it's actually, and even on our public hearing statement, it's 40.4, If you look on this third page in, right on the top, that should say 40.4.40.3.
Yeah, I don't know.
Is that a, is that a typo?
That's what it looks like. Because on the, on the agenda, it's correct.
It was a cut and paste. I'm not sure where the, 40.41, but the application calls for 40.40.3.
Yes.
So that's what it should be.
And it's, on the first page, it's correct. It's just not correct.
I'm not sure where that, how that got from.
4.40.1 is another type of use. Is that...
It's elderly housing.
Yeah.
So, so, and basically...
4.4, a 4.4, oh, God, 4.40.1 is assisted living.
Right.
Yeah.
So it has nothing to do with this, so...
I'm, I'm looking at the regulations online right now.
Walter, what's your, what's your concern? Is it struck or...
Well, I don't know. We need to...
The request is to change 40.40...
4.40.3.
4.40.3.
Is what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, so this is a typo.
It's a typo on your report from staff.
Yeah. Because it's, it's okay on the first page. It's everywhere okay. Just on that third page, it's typo.
It's in the neighborhood, anyway.
Well, I know that.
It's not too far away.
We don't want...
No, thank you for catching that.
Everything has to be...
I know. Good catch.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We don't like to sit in the neighborhood, Frank.
We are, we are talking about 4.40.3.
Yes.
Period. That's all I wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. You good?
I'm good.
Yeah. Anybody else in the commission? Carl, I just have one, just one little quick thing. So we're, we're here for an amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right.
And so I don't want to get too much into the design. For me, I know you'll be coming back.
Yes.
But just that elevator shafting question, that's the westerly end, and it's behind that building. You won't, is it not going to stick up over that building?
No. Here, we're going to show you. What you see from, like, Route 5?
Right.
This is what you're going to see from Route 5.
You're not going to see it.
Right there. Oh, see that?
Yeah. That's what I wanted to point out. Without getting into much of the design, really not...
It's about two feet, so it's good.
And, right.
Yeah, you'll, you'll be able to see that if you're looking from the west.
Right.
Yeah. That's what you'll see.
Exactly. And, you know, you're going to come back, and you're going to be, obviously, come back with something nice. There's screening for rooftop units that we have in our regulations now.
Well, yeah, there's HVAC up there, yeah.
There's all kinds of stuff. Yeah, there's all kinds of, you can get creative, I think, what is it? How much is sticking up? Two feet? I mean, I'm...
It's about two feet.
Yeah. So, I mean, so, you know what I'm saying? So when you come back, we could address some of them things and some of the questions that were brought up tonight. I just want to focus on the amendment, really. We're here to amend the zone, so...
You do realize...
Do commissioners agree?
You do realize you're going to need binoculars to see it from Route 5?
That's what I'm trying to, that's the point I'm trying to make. Again, without...
Because we're, we're not right next to Route 5 here, and there's trees, grass, and everything.
Exactly.
I think your point is well-taken, though.
Yeah, I just...
With the trees, you can barely see the building.
I got to tell you, when someone first told me they went to OLA, I said, well, where is that? And I lived, grew up in Windsor Locks.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
And they said, oh, that's, and I drove by it, I said, what are you talking about? I don't even think there's anything on that property.
There's so many creative...
I have no clue.
Yeah. It's, it's, I think, really, it's not part of, it is part of this, but it's not technically not part of this, but...
Right, yes.
There are so many creative ways out there to do things now. You could even match the brick on, I'm not telling you to do, match the brick on the old building, whatever.
You'll see this, but we, we talked about making it look like the roof line of the, you know, so...
Right. So I don't think that's too much of an issue, and I know that, you know, and all you guys know, ladies and gentlemen, they're going to be back again, and we're going to go, you know, discuss in-depth parking and, you know...
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, because, yeah, right. So I, I know, I'm very familiar with, you know, that piece of land there, and, and that's, that's probably 500 feet from the road, Enfield Street, or maybe more.
Sure.
So...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
More than that, yeah.
So I think we're, I'm good. I just wanted to bring that up and bring that out, that, you know, we look, if this passes tonight, you know, we'll be able to look forward to discussing all the particulars that go along with the design. Do any of the commissioners have any other questions or comments? Lori, you have anything for us?
I guess, you know, just to point out that I think, you know, we've, we've kind of like modified this, modified it. I think that it's, it's at a good point. I think it's a good proposal. It does meet the plan of conservation in fulfillment with preservation of historic resources and diversified housing stock, new housing, multifamily, and of course, you know, housing for the elderly is something that we definitely need. So I'm certainly in favor of this, but I don't vote.
Well, thank you for your input. I appreciate all the work you do with the applicants and the residents. I really appreciate it. At this time, Carl, if you don't mind, I'd like to have the public come up if there's any comment tonight. And don't go too far. Carl, you...
I'd like to make one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry?
That's okay. No, it's fine. I just want to make sure with the public hearing, we have a letter from John Malinowski.
Yes.
I would like to make sure that...
That was in your packet, yes.
Yeah. I would like to make sure that letter becomes part of the public hearing.
You want to raise it? Show a hand? We didn't show hands for that, or...
No, just, it's just, it was part of your packet, a letter from John Malinowski. Date 3/26/24.
No, I did see it, and, okay.
And that was a, a letter in favor of the application.
Members who want to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
The letter isn't, the letter isn't favored.
Got it, feeling, getting it.
So I just wanted to make sure it's part of the record. Thank you.
Okay. Nikki, you come up? Name and address, please, for the record. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street. Upon reading the text amendment for PH number 3088ZA for tonight's meeting, I would like to point out that the agreed-upon parking was for one and one-half spaces for studio or one-bedroom unit. The statement, "Two spaces per two-bedroom units should be stricken from the text as no such units are to be built," per agreement with the neighborhood representatives. Because of this discrepancy, I suggest this public hearing be continued until the neighborhood representatives have an opportunity to meet with the, with all other concerned parties. Now, I just want to say something. I wasn't going to say anything, but Attorney Landelina brought up a point regarding the financial packets, and I just want to let you commissioners know that after having them get awarded the HUD money, I did some investigation, because I was kind of perplexed how they could get it without having any plans before you. So did my reading, called the government, and did you know that HUD, to be approved for any money, is that you have to have your zoning approval approved before they put the application in? And secondly, what's more importantly, what the person at HUD told me, was a neighborhood approval. So this project is far from approval from us, but this text amendment is the first step, but this parking, two spaces, needs to be, the two bedrooms, needs to be addressed. Thank you. Oh, that's another thing, too. When the HUD people told me that, in other words, you get awarded the money, but it's not given to them yet. It's not allocated until the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, zoning approval and neighborhood approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Marie? Already on your way.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Anne Marie Galdenzi, 1330 Enfield Street.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening to me today. I'd like you to know that, I'd like to counsel to know that the neighbors, a few of the neighbors in the area met with Carl Landelina, FSI, Community Builders, several times through emails, phone calls, in-person conference calls, and video conferencing. And we really appreciate their time and effort in talking with us and getting our viewpoint and opinion. And through that, we came to the proposed text amendment that, that Mr. Landelina has put forth. And we, the few, the several of us that have met and I have talked to personally, do agree with what exists today to that text amendment. So as far as there's no changes to this existing proposed text amendment, I think most of the neighbors are good to go here, and we appreciate their time and effort in working with us. I did note, and I'm sorry, Carl, I just noticed this, one of the proposals is in Section 4.2, use requirements of the housing for the elderly, where you have to put a special permit. It's in that chart. It's, we wanted to add that footnote, number 13, in, in that, so footnote number 13 applies to HR 33 elderly housing. I did not see footnote number 13. It just says SP, unless I'm not missing the wrong thing. Right, that's what I see, but in the paperwork, the master agreement, I didn't see it.
Are you talking about the master packet?
Yes.
That could be a work in progress or a typo, depending on when she put it out.
Okay. Okay. Great. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would the applicants like to come back up and address any of the concerns that the citizens had?
Thank you again for the record, Carl Landelina. Our proposal does not include two-bedroom units, so I don't, I, there may be something floating around, staff-wise or whatever, I don't know that they're referring to. It's not in what's before you tonight for the amendment we're seeking.
You answered that relative to the parking spots? Is that where you're going with that, Carl?
Yeah. Right. Exactly. Now, as far, and again, yes, until we get zoning approval and building, meet the building code and engineer plans, we're, we're not going to get any money. The way the program works and all the HUD and programs work is there's a point system. So they have certain points that they give you for certain benchmarks along the way. So had we already had zoning approval when we went for the grant, we would have gotten a few more points, and we would have gone up on the list, perhaps more. All right? As it was, we were one of only three in the state that got it, but when we added up our points, we were a few less points because we didn't have zoning approval. It doesn't mean we can do this without zoning approval or, so I'm not sure who Ms. Price talked to, but you can get a grant without zoning approval. You just, you're fighting now because you don't have as many points as someone else might have. All right? So that's how we got the grant. And we know until we get zoning approval. Now, neighborhood approval, I'm not familiar with that. I've, you know, done a bunch of these projects and I've never heard anyone say that, and I don't know how you would get that. Would you have the neighbors come and vote? I don't know what that means. So yeah, I'd be curious to find out, but you know, we are, certainly there are other benchmarks we have to go along the way before we'll start building and getting, get money for the construction and the operation of this facility. But it's evident from the fact that we got the grant, we don't have zoning approval, that you can get it without a grant, without a zoning approval. So we just accumulated more points in other areas to make up for the fact that we didn't have zoning approval ready. So, but that's really all I have at this point. I think generally speaking, this is a good compromise between staff, you folks, us, and the neighbors. And we're asking for you to close the public hearing and approve it.
Lori?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, the recommendation for the two spaces per two-bedroom was just to keep it open for other opportunities in the area because perhaps there is an opportunity for somebody else to build something that would want two bedrooms. I have no problem taking it out if that's an issue. And one space per one bedroom is statutorily required. We may not require anything more than that, so.
Well, if we take it out, if we take that out-
It was my recommendation.
Well, relative to this, it may prohibit somebody else from doing something. We don't want to handcuff somebody else somewhere else. I mean, I don't think that's fair. But you know, according to this application, it'll be specific. Again, it'll be coming back.
Right. So the point is, is that they could have two bedrooms. There's nobody saying that they should not. That doesn't mean that they don't, that doesn't mean that they have to have two bedrooms. I'm just saying if there's another opportunity out there, it just keeps it open for, again, this is not the only, the only project under this regulation. And that's how we always have to look at it in the broader scope of things.
Exactly.
However, I, you know, if they want to just have this specific type of housing and that's what the commission would like, then take the two parking spaces out, no problem. But we can't require more than one space.
Well, on the next round, it could be a condition. Well, when they come back again.
I'm sorry.
And I think when they come back with their application for the design and for permit.
Can I see what you've, because I, can I see what you've shown the commission?
Oh, sure.
What they're looking at? Right.
So I just, you had, you originally had two bedrooms.
Right.
And then you took it out. And I suggested that we keep that in, just in case.
Well, I think the language that's there, and again, we have no intention of having anything other than what we've told you, the language right now says one space per studio or one-bedroom unit.
Right.
Right.
The statutory requirement.
Right. So that doesn't mean someone couldn't have a two-bedroom unit, they'd have to have two spaces, I guess.
Right.
Whether you do that or not, I don't, I don't know. But that's, we don't, we don't, personally, we don't want to get caught up in this, you know?
Right, right.
We understand why staff would ask for that.
If it's going to make or break the application, I would suggest is take it out.
Right. No, I think, I think the consensus is, I think the consensus so far, what I'm hearing is we're going to leave it. But as far as resident approval, is that what the word was, resident approval?
Neighborhood approval, I think.
Neighborhood approval.
Right.
I don't know about that either, but I do, I can say that I commend the applicant and the residents for all the work you guys did together. I mean, there may be a couple of things, a couple of differences still out there, but I hope what you guys did sets an example going forward, you know, for other projects in town. We had some very contentious applications come forward, and I think that the reach-out factor, the reach-out that you did with the residents, I think, went a long way.
Yeah.
And I want to commend you for that.
I appreciate that, and just so-
And the residents.
So the residents can hear it as well as you. We're not finished.
I understand.
When we get, when we have a design, we're going to share with them right away because that was maybe one of the issues last time when we were here last year, but we don't want that to be an issue again.
And I think the communication and the openness that you had, I don't think the parking issue is going to be an issue. I mean, you're here saying what you're going to be doing, and I think there's, you've built the trust factor. You've built trust with the community and the neighbors.
Right.
So I don't see you coming around and saying, oh, no, no, we're going to put more parking in. It ain't going to happen. So again, I commend the applicant, the neighbors. I think you guys did a good job coming together and moving this forward. So would the applicant, would the residents like to come up again and speak? You have another opportunity if you'd like to? Just want to be sure and let you know that. Are you, ma'am, are you, are you good? Come up and on the record and if you want, no, I want you to be able to have as much time.
So I do want to say, just to clarify, the funding for a project has nothing to do with-
I was going to say that. Thank you.
In this forum.
Right. Where they get their money is their problem. And if you don't get your money, it is your problem.
Either way, it's their problem.
Please, name and address again for the record. Thank you.
Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street. I guess the concern is HR 33 overall. And you're making a special permit, a special text for this zone, and the two spaces are important with the two parking, with the two bedrooms. And any future projects down the line, let them come before you and ask them to get another text amendment for those two bedrooms?
Have to come before.
I understand that, but it should be taken out for right now because this is what makes us, the neighborhoods, feel comfortable.
Let me just respond if I can. The changes they're looking for in going into the HR 33 is for any project that has to be done in HR 33 zone. So if someone wanted to build, only put 10 apartments down there and said, we're going to put in two-bedroom units, then the regulation would say, what do you do for parking? So if I had only 10 units instead of the 45, I believe it is, that they're adding right now, or proposing to add, if I say I'm only going to build 10, there wouldn't be an issue if they were all two bedrooms and you had 20 parking spaces. Okay? But if we take that out, then we would have someone in here looking for another zoning change to put two spaces per two-bedroom unit in. And what we're trying to do is say, okay, let's not have spot zoning. The issue last time there was here really came up because it was spot zoning. They didn't have the right to do it, so now they wanted to change, put a different type of zone in there. And that's really what the problem was the last time, if I recall. Now, I wasn't on the commission last time, but I sat here during a lot of the public hearings the last time.
I did, too.
And so what I'm saying is it's, if we want to regulate the parking and we want to say, okay, there's no unit that gets two parking places, we can do that with a site plan. We can make it then specific to that plan that they want to, want to have done.
But as-
Without changing, without changing the zone.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but what, what Ms. Woodin said, that she put it in there because she said that it's for future projects down the road. It's not, this is, changing your HR 33 right now is not for future projects down the road. It's for this particular project. And you know what? And that's my concern, that, in other words, somebody else can come in and say, oh, we're going to put two bedrooms in here and air, I don't know. It's up to you, it's up to you. You're the commissioner, you're more smarter than me, so that's fine, but I'm just-
You've got a lot of knowledge.
And Attorney Landelina, I will let you know who I talked to at HUD.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. You guys can come back up if you'd like. You all set? Okay. Could I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We think we need to do a roll call.
Secretary.
Secretary is here. Oh, sorry.
Do we need, do we need a roll call to close it?
No, I just wanted, I just want to know who voted.
Okay, who, who made the motion?
A lot of male voices out there.
I made the motion.
Who seconded it?
Thank you.
I thought it was Walter.
Walter did, Walter thirded it.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Show of hands to close the public hearing? You guys aren't voting, that's right? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, do we get a chance to discuss?
Yeah, on a discussion, once the motion's made. Under Roberts' rules, the motion has to be made, and then I'll open it up for discussion.
Sorry, we just closed the public hearing. My apology.
Yeah, we'll have all the time we can.
I apologize.
I don't know, no need to apologize. Please continue.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3088ZA, application of Felician Sisters of North America Real Estate Trust for a text amendment to section 4.20 and 4.40.3 to allow elderly housing with a special permit and special conditions in the HR 33 zone based upon the following findings. In adopting this regulation, the commission has considered the Plan of Conservation and Development, POCD, and finds the amendment to be consistent with the POCD. P.23 Historic Resources. While historic districts function under their own statutory and regulatory authority that is in addition to zoning, all of Enfield's historic districts and resources should be supported by the Town of Enfield, including the Planning and Zoning Commission. Most important, the preservation of historic resources should remain a top priority across local government agencies. This means striking a balance between history, the inevitability of change, and new development. And P.48 Residential Development, Housing and Housing Needs, Strategies for Improvement. In accordance with 8-30J, the Planning and Zoning Commission must actively seek to encourage, allow, and promote a modern and diversified housing stock, including affordable housing. This includes encouraging the renovation of the existing housing stock, especially in Thompsonville, and construction of new housing stock. New housing should encourage the favor and favor multifamily residential housing as standalone developments and as part of mixed-use developments. Encourage and provide for a diversity of housing types, tenure, and affordable to all incomes. This includes a mix of single-family, missing-middle, and multifamily housing. In addition, market rate multifamily residential should target the $75,000 to $99,000 income cohort with 10% to 15% affordable at or below 80% AMI. Reasons for Approval. The amendment is limited to certain parcels in the HR 33 zone and includes criteria and application procedures. The commission determines to be sufficient to assure the public's safety and convenience will be served. If passed this motion, the effective day, the notice will be published in the newspaper on April 5, 2024, and the amendment would be effective on April 21, 2024 upon filing in the town clerk's office. Thank you.
Second.
Got it.
Okay, before we start the discussion, I'm going to just do a five-minute recess, please. Five minutes?
It's up to you.
Okay, there they are. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Thank you. The motion was made and seconded for approval, discussion, and the motion. And we will start with Commissioner DeGray.
I understand some concerns of the residents and the two-bedroom thing, but according to Attorney Landelina and land use records, there's only a few properties that would be able to do any kind of builds. The Purple Heart Museum, Little Sisters of the Poor, the Enfield Street School, the Housing Authority, which is already doing one-bedrooms, and then the cemetery. Those are properties that in the future may or may not, and we don't really, we can't look for that to happen because we don't know what's going to happen. But to have two bedrooms, and if somebody did, say, take over the cemetery, God forbid, and move everybody, which would be very expensive, and I don't know what they would do, they may want to do two-bedroom. But again, what is the possibility of that? I don't know. So I'm good with the two bedrooms, two spaces. We've been, even though Attorney Landelina said, you know, we're not, we're not doing two bedrooms, but in the future, who knows? Two sisters may, as they get older, want to live together, take care of each other, and want two bedrooms. I know as elderly people get on, they sleep in separate bedrooms. They're a couple. So two bedrooms in a elderly housing complex is not that unusual. So I'm good with this text change.
I think there's more of a chance of Enfield Street School doing it before we exhume bodies.
Right, so. I don't think anybody wants to do that, but.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner DeGray. Next, anybody else would like to speak?
I have a question. So I'm trying to, and I'm learning because I'm a newbie here, but I would be, and then tell me if I'm wrong, like, I would be saying, for me, in my mind, the way I'm thinking about this, is we should say no to the, to the two bedrooms now, and if in the future they're going to come back and say, we want two bedrooms now, you know, we can talk about what those spaces look like at that time. That would be my, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of what my feeling is.
To Lori for that question, I think it's already, no two-bedroom in this project. And what, what would happen is if somebody comes back or that, or if they wanted to come back, they would have to come back, or another applicant would have to come.
But is there already a precedent set because in this ruling, it says two bedrooms is two spaces?
That's the statutory requirement for two-bedroom apartments.
Okay.
If it was a five-bedroom apartment, the statutory requirement is two spaces.
Okay. That was my question. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you. Anybody else? I see no one else has comments. I, I will be supporting this. Again, I commend all the parties. I think, like I said before, I did say in the first application, as a commissioner sitting here, I thought that something to do with elderly would be more in the mission of the sisters as we've known them, as we've all known them for our entire lives here. So I, you know, I think it was a good, a good change, and just by the number of people that were in opposition, that aren't in opposition now, speaks volumes. So I think that we carry on the sisters' mission going forward here. So I'm going to be supporting this. With that, with that said, is there a, so we're going to need a roll call? Everybody all set? Roll call, please.
Okay.
Did anybody, was there somebody wanting to speak? I'm sorry.
I just, please clarify whether you're voting with the two-bedroom and two parking lot, two parking spaces or not.
Yes, we're going to vote the way it is written.
As is.
As is.
Okay, as, as staff has written it.
Yep, as is, yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call motion, please.
Okay, Walter Cruzal.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky is four. Vote is unanimous. Motion passed.
Approved. Congratulations. Thank you.
Felician Sisters, thank you.
We thank them for their years and years of service to the community. We're happy that we're still going to have, have them here working hard.
God bless you all.
Thank you. And I- And I want babka bread. Next time you come. Now, I shouldn't say that. Somebody will say, oh, gee, you're going to get bread and approval. Forget about the bread, forget I said that.
There was no motion for that, so.
Okay. You wanted to take a second to clear a room? No, we're good. I don't want to be much noise. Next thing on the agenda is new public hearings. No new public hearings. Any old business? Anybody have any old business they would like to discuss tonight? Any new business? New business? Other business? What is the difference between new, old, and other?
There you go. Good question.
It's got to fall in some category. Other would be between new and, new and old. Laurie, applications to be received?
Nope, not this evening.
Opportunities and unresolved issues?
Nothing.
Executive session, we have none?
Motion to adjourn.
There's no basketball tonight.
Doesn't matter.
Motion to adjourn, seconded. All in favor? Thank you, thank you, panel.
Eight twelve.
Adjourned.